Morning, everyone. Thank you for coming here this morning. Beating the weather, it looks like. So, we'll go ahead and start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
(Inaudible) of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So, just a reminder to everyone to silence their cellphones. I think they put this on here for me, so I can silence my cellphone. And meeting documents are available for review down next to Commissioner Heiburger. And Carol's here this morning if you need a listening device. So, we're going to start out our meeting this morning with a bit of a celebration. We have an important milestone to mark here today. In 2014, before either Commissioner Karski or I were even around, the commission authorized the county to move forward with the Enterprise Resource Planning System, which we affectionately call ERP. And for the past five years, staff have researched and worked and worked with a consultant and determined all the needs that we have here. And through that process, we've been able to move off a very antiquated 1980's software system. And pretty much anywhere that finances were touched in the county, from a signed deposit with planning to paying of your property taxes to payroll, all of that has been updated and it has had a tremendous positive effect on everyone in the county and all of the taxpayers in the county as well. And so, we're here to celebrate the thousands and literally thousands of hours that were spent on planning to ensure a smooth transition. And we would like to thank our fearless leader in that whole process, Monte Wantenbach. And I'd like to give you a few minutes just to help celebrate this event.
Yes, absolutely. Thank you, Commissioners, for taking this opportunity to recognize the efforts of the county team that went through this project. So, as you indicated, you know, this really kind of started back in 2014 between Ken McFarland, the Commission Administrator at the time, and Bob Litz. They were inquiring about a more modern accounting system so that they could have better reporting. And they wanted a system that adhered to the state's chart of accounts more closely than what we were doing. And so, those conversations led to a project where we engaged a consultant to do a needs assessment report. Our needs assessment to look at the solution that we're using here at the county and compare that to, you know, what was available in the industry and what those other options were. So, that was in 2015 when we threw that. And then, that concluded. And it was kind of concluded that, you know, there are more modern solutions out there that can meet your needs and lead you into the future. So, we proceeded with a full RFP for an ERP system. And to kind of define that ERP means accounting, payroll, and property tax software is what ERP means for us here at the county. So, like you said, that project required thousands of man-hours between the various folks here at the county. So, with me today, I don't know if I have everybody, but I'll point out a few folks that I asked to come up today because they were part of all three phases. This is the A Team here at the county. So, between Kim Vicki and Don here, they were, like I said, involved with all three phases of the project. So, Kim and Vicki, as you know, are from the Auditor's Office. I think you guys have heard Don's name a lot, but maybe not met Don before. So, I asked her to come up here. She was a critical part of the data migration and explaining how the current system worked. So, I appreciate them and all their efforts. And then, I also wanted to mention a few other folks that were involved with the project. So, from the Auditor's Office, Mary Zeeb for her role in the property tax portion of the software. Rhonda Warren for her role in the payroll module of the software. From HR, Carrie Dever and Maggie are back there. So, that was the third phase. And they just use the Tyler Munus system to go through open enrollment. So, all county employees were able to go in and specify what healthcare and dental and whatnot they wanted for the coming year. Additionally, from the IT Department, Steve Millage, Kevin Nelson, Vince Fluckey, Jerry Hebert. Trish helped with some of the training, as well as Kelly Nighthoff for her role from the Treasurers' Office. Like any major software project like this, there's challenges and obstacles. And it was this core group here that kind of helped to figure out how we were going to deal with those challenges and obstacles. You know, do we have to configure something different? Did we have to, as the county, find some sort of different way that we're going to process things differently or handle things? So, kudos to this team for finding ways to make a solution work when we ran into those challenges. So, now that we have everything in place, we're through all three phases. And I think that with the new system, we have a system that now aligns with the state chart of accounts. We have reduced risk because we have a vendor-supported system. We have better auditing capabilities to track who performed what tasks within side of the system. And our payroll process has been greatly streamlined. Payroll data comes from our systems here at the county into that system in a much more streamlined fashion. So, with that, thank you very much for your guys' support. You know, to get these projects started, there kind of has to be a commitment from your group. And thank you for that, even though that this team has kind of evolved since then. Thank you for your support.
Well, I don't know. I don't want to hog the mic if anybody else has anything they want to say in particular. Commissioner Karski.
Not only are there challenges, there's distractions. And I apologize for cutting you off. Change is never easy. And you're, you know, over the years that I've watched you guys do it, you've done a fantastic job. And just to congratulate you guys and thank you. And for, you know, all the other departments too, because you didn't go it alone and you worked with everybody and you showed a willingness to do that. So, thank you very much.
Yeah. And to that point, you know, the county runs on kind of a skeleton staff, so to speak. And, you know, these folks all had their regular job to do on top of this. And so, kudos to them for finding the time to make this work while they were trying to balance other workloads as well.
Well, once again, thank you. I mean, I think from our perspective, it's a huge compliment to you guys to think that from our perspective, you made it look so easy. It was like, oh, it just all went smoothly. And there are never any major hiccups that we were aware of. So, we just appreciate you shielding us from all of the challenges that you faced.
And to that point, I didn't mention Carol Muller. So, Carol Muller was the project sponsor. So, it was always a good sign when she didn't hear from me. When she heard from me, that usually meant, hey, there's some issues here that you need to be aware of and some potential changes and go-live dates. And none of that happened. We were able to go live with all three phases on schedule. But certainly, as you're going through it, you weren't certain if you're going to meet all those deadlines. So, Carol was that kind of person that that filtered up to. And it was always good news when she didn't hear anything.
All right. Well, thank you very much. I think when we get to the Auditor's Report, we'll see some very tangible results of some of the work that you did. So, appreciate that. Okay. So, that takes us to routine business. The first item is I'd consider a motion to amend the agenda to remove Item 4, an item that the Minnehaha County Project update for November 19, and to remove Item 13, an item to authorize Chairperson to sign an agreement between Minnehaha County and Short Elliot Hendrickson. I think those were just carryovers from last week by accident.
Carol's motion.
I'll second that.
Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Next item is to approve the agenda as amended.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Next item, Item 2, is to approve the commission meeting minutes from November 19, 2019.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Next item is to approve the special commission meeting minutes from last week, November 19.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Next item are bills to be paid in the amount of $7,675,919.83. Pay the bills. Motion and second to pay the bills. Any comments? Oh, Kim Adamson, you're going to help us explain how we got the magic number of 7 million.
Right. Good morning, Commissioners. Kim Adamson from the Auditor's Office. You will notice that in the bills today, we are making our annual principal and semi-annual interest payments on our bond issues. We have six outstanding issues at this time, three in the bond redemption fund. Those were to finance the jail kitchen, the courthouse addition, and a parking lot. And the new jail interest payment is in that group. Then, we have three issues in the building fund that date back to the old jail, we'll refer to it now, the courthouse, and the human services building. So, those payments in total are $4,833,000. So, a significant portion of the bills that you're approving today.
Thank you. Any questions for Kim? All right. Any other comments about the bills? Okay. I had a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Next item are the Auditor's Office financial reports. Good morning, Vicki.
Good morning, Commissioners. Vicki Hewitt from the Auditor's Office. With the October financial results, starting out with the general fund cash balance, a healthy $19 million, up $6.5 million over last year. And we'll see later in the revenues, that's due to property taxes being applied in October. The highway fund cash balance sitting at $10,454,000, relatively even with last year. And then, general fund expenditures are at, for total, $47,431,000. So, 81.5% of budget, just slightly over last year. Personnel sitting relatively even with last year, half percent higher at $32,496,000. And then, other expenses at $14.9 million, 79.4% of budget. So, some of that is due to grant spending that has not been supplemented, those sort of things. So... And then, revenues, saving the best for last, total revenue at $51,263,000, 90% of budget, 10% over last year. Again, most of that due to the current taxes of $39,428,000. So, an 11% increase over last year. And that's just due to the timing of getting those payments applied in October. So, the Treasurers' Office did a great job of getting a lot of those applied. And then, our other revenues at $11.8 million, 86.7% of budget. Those are up slightly as well.
Commissioner Heiburger.
Just a question. Is there any correlation between the new ERP and having it completely up and going to the fact that we collected 11% more because we could just recognize that money quicker?
Possibly. I don't know that there were extra systems in place. I think the Treasurers' Office just made an effort to get those in quicker.
Thank you.
All right. Any other questions? Thank you very much. Okay. So, that takes us to next item, personnel actions. Consider a motion to approve the routine personnel actions.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Next item, our abatements recommended for approval. Good morning.
Good morning. So, we have two abatements, and they're both from the City of Crooks Redevelopment Commission. So, they're a non-taxable entity and they purchased some land. We're recommending approval to abate those taxes.
Okay. So, first item, I'd consider a motion to approve the abatement on Parcel 60143 for the City of Crooks Redevelopment Commission, 2018 property tax on the amount of $1,472.57.
Motion approved.
Actually, I think we can, I'm sorry, we can take both of those in one vote. That was my bad. So, then, it would be Parcel 60143 and Parcel 82420.
Motion to approve vote.
Second and a question.
Motion and a second. And then, Commissioner Karski.
We have no TIFs outstanding on these properties or there's nothing.
Nope. We did quite a bit of background research on these to make sure we were all in the clear to recommend approval.
Yeah. Thank you.
Any other questions? If not, I had a motion and a second. Roll call vote, please.
Benega.
Aye.
Heiburger.
Aye.
Karski.
Aye.
Barth.
Aye.
Bender.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you very much. So, Item 7, notices and requests, there are none. Item 8, planning and zoning notices, there are none. Item 9, petition for compromise of lien, there are none. So, that takes us to opportunity for public comment. If there's anyone here today who would like to speak about something that's not on the agenda, this is your opportunity. Seeing no one, we'll go to regular business. First item is a public hearing and second reading for major zoning ordinance amendment 1905. Kevin, good morning.
Good morning. Kevin Hookman, County Planning Department. This is a major amendment for the High Prairie Ranch Plan Development District. Do we have the PowerPoint? Oh, sorry. We'll probably get the PowerPoint up here. The High Prairie Ranch Development District is located approximately two and a half miles east of Crooks. The whole development has various subareas for residential lots, horse stable, parkland, and agricultural land. The petitioner is requesting to make 53-acre property to be rezoned from Subarea C to Subarea D, and that is from primary recreational land to agricultural land. There's the legal description, and the petitioner's name is Robert Binstock. And this is the location of the property there. And I'll bring it one more. So, this is the original map for the Plan Development District. And Subarea C is that area that's green, and that's the area that's being requested for rezoning to Subarea D. The High Prairie Ranch Plan Development District was approved in 1992. The initial intent was to have the residential development, that yellow area, to have a common ownership in a horse stable and a park-like riding-type area in the Subarea C. The park trail area in Subarea C was common ownership, but now is owned by one owner, one sole owner, which is the petitioner. And it's currently still zoned for that park and recreational use. And the petitioner would like to use it for his own personal uses and agricultural-type uses. Staff would note at this point that the property, this became known to staff as the, or the request was here because of a complaint. The property owner has some cattle located kind of on the north side of the property in a small pen. And this is rezoning requests is to make this his pen legal into a new zoning district. The Planning Commission heard this item on October 28 and unanimously voted to approve the major amendment. There was opposition to the item at the meeting, but prior to the meeting, there was some letters both in opposition and for approval of it and support. And I'll show you some photos. So, there's the small pen that's located on the north side of the lot. And that's just along kind of a little creek valley on the north of the subdivision there. And this is the road that's used to access that pen, and the subdivision road's off to the left there. And this is the subdivision road, and there's the pen to the left with a few cattle in it. More of the subdivision road to the left is the Subarea. And then, this is the larger area on the east side of the river that is currently being used for pasture land. And that's where I'm at. So, I'll bring it back to the main map and ask if there's any questions. Oh, I would say, I should say that the commission may vote to amend, approve, or deny the proposed zoning ordinance, ordinance MC 1616419.
Any chance, does anybody have any questions for Kevin? Commissioner Barth.
I believe I was absent during this meeting from the planning and zoning. So, if that whole area is being grazed, isn't there a chance that cattle will wind up washed downstream to Brandon or something?
We can ask the petitioner a little bit more on that, but from my understanding, the area the east of the river is in what's called the RAM program. So, it's like a conservation program to keep cattle out during certain seasons.
It's a pretty steep bank there.
Okay. Any other questions for Kevin? If not, this is a public hearing. So, if the applicant or anyone in favor of this would like to speak, this is your opportunity. Good morning. If you could just identify yourself and give your address, please.
Morning. Robert Binstock, 47312, Roganis Place, Renner, South Dakota.
Did you have anything that you wanted to add to Kevin's report?
I guess any questions as to his, the land actually where the cattle, the small pen is not quite near. There's a pasture that I put in the ASRAM program right to the north of that, and then everything across the river is in the ASRAM program. So, we've pretty much done everything we can to keep this as good as we can and still utilize it properly. I guess if there's any questions on how we ended up in park and rec, I'll answer them.
Any questions? Okay. Thank you. So, once again, this is a public hearing. Is there anyone here who's opposed to this application who'd like to speak in opposition? Does this matter? All right. Seeing none, is there any other comments or questions?
I'm sure I'd make a motion to approve Major Amendment 19-05.
Second.
Second. Commissioner Karski.
Just full disclosure, I don't know who else received the email or anybody contact Mr. Brendy yesterday. I did call him up and talk to him. So, just to disclose that, I think he lives out in that area. And I've also been to Mr. Binstock's place. It's been probably over 20 years, and I've known Bob for a few years also. So, just full disclosure that I have been there and I kind of have an idea what's out there. The only question, if I could, Bob, ask you quickly, that Subarea, I believe it's C, or B, B, where you have the barn. The only concern I heard from people was that, you know, this is the first step in developing, putting cattle into there too. Is your plan to do that?
No, the, everything on the, what happened is everything on the, basically, south side of the road would be part of the development. And everything north was basically pasture land, but they put it in the park and rec so people could maybe utilize it to ride their horse or something. After the developers, even a year later, realized that nobody wants a whole part of a barn, and they don't want a pasture, they don't want any part of that. So, they revoked all that. So, and I don't want to put the three acres in the barn into this thing. It probably wouldn't be prudent with the development anyway. But everything north of there, all the way to Baltic and Canada, is pretty much ag land. And we've always used it for cattle, kind of like to keep using it for cattle. And, you know, we put in the ASRAM program to protect the river, which is a great program. So, I'm not interested in anything south of the road, just what's north.
And that's great to hear. I love it when I hear people say they want to be a good neighbor and, you know, it's a whole lot easier than bringing it to us where we try to legislate good neighbors. So, that was the only concern I truly had. So, thank you for that.
Any other questions or comments? Okay. I have a motion and a second. Roll call vote, please.
Heiburger.
Aye.
Karski.
Aye.
Barth.
Aye.
Benega.
Aye.
Bender.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. So, that takes us to Item 11, which is to authorize the chair to sign a memorandum of understanding between the City of Sioux Falls and Minnehaha County for pictometry services. Scott Anderson, good morning.
Thank you, Scott Anderson, County Planning Department. And I have prepared a short memo for you, which outlines the memorandum of understanding with the City of Sioux Falls. Just some quick background, you may recall, like, two or three weeks ago, we entered into a contract with pictometry to do aerial photography. That aerial photography will be done next spring when the leaves are not on the trees so we can get a good picture of the properties. And that's a three-year contract. We pay for that for three years. And we work in conjunction with the City of Sioux Falls. And the one vendor shoots all of the pictures for the City of Sioux Falls and the county at the same time. And we, as part of the contract with pictometry, we are going to be paying for all of that. It's just easier for bookkeeping if they just get one check from one entity. But the city is participating with this, and we have been working with them, and they will be paying their portion of that. And that's what we're looking at today, is that memorandum of agreement or understanding that the City of Sioux Falls will, the total contract price was just about $197,000. And this is a three-year contract. So, the city has agreed to pay their portion of the contract, which is $23,428.75 annually. And the county's annual portion is $42,141.50. And then, you will see that the contract basically outlines how that's to be paid and when we bill them. I will indicate or let you know that the, all of the legal entities have reviewed the contract. The state's attorney, Drew DeGroot, has reviewed it and approved the proposed wording. And the city attorney has also reviewed the contract or the proposed agreement. So, this is, just to finalize that, the last detail of that contract, the pictometry contract, and I will stand by for any questions.
Any questions for Scott? Okay. I think this is something that we have done in the past. It's been a great kind of win-win opportunity for the city and the county to share in this contract. So, if there aren't any questions, I'd entertain a motion.
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Next one is Item 12, authorize the chairperson to sign the 2020 per diem agreements for secure and non-secure juvenile detention between Minnehaha County, Lutheran Social Services, and 15 partner counties. Jamie Grabett, good morning.
Good morning, Jamie Grabett, Director of Juvenile Detention Center. The contracts that you have before you are for 15 partner counties, they include, the only one that's different is Lincoln County because we provide community supervision and evening report center services to that county. Otherwise, they're all the same. They have a 3% increase across the board that matched what the state increased what shelter care could get from state contracted agencies. So, we feel it's going to meet all our expenses and make sure we're not subsidizing other counties to old kids.
Questions? All right. Kind of a quiet group this morning.
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. So, that takes us to Item 14, which is consider a motion to approve and authorize the chairperson to sign right-of-way purchase agreements for six parcels to rebuild County Highway 146, Project 1701. DJ Booth, good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. DJ Booth, the Highway Superintendent. We've had quite a few of these agenda items with right-of-way purchases on 146. Today, we have the final six that we'll be purchasing as of right now to finalize the right-of-way purchases out there. We do have some pending legal items with some remaining parcels, but today, we're requesting your approval to execute right-of-way purchase agreements with these six parcels. And we hope to be moving forward with our construction project next summer.
Any questions?
Question.
Commissioner Barth.
How many more of these are we in need of?
There are eight more parcels that don't have the full right-of-way width along this whole seven-mile corridor.
Okay. Thank you.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Takes us to the next item, Item 15, which is authorize the chairperson to sign an agreement with Infrastructure Design Group for professional services to conduct land surveying. with the Infrastructure Design Group for professional services to conduct land surveying. DJ.
Commissioners, when I started at the county about eight years ago, there were a box of about 200 documents, records of property transfers that had partially been completed the previous several years. And we started going through those documents initially and decided that it was a very large project. We had some lower hanging fruit, things that we needed to complete in the department, so we set them aside. And about four years ago, we started working pretty more, a lot more diligently on these documents. When the state's attorney supplied Judy as an employee that will work out of our office earlier this year, she started working on a pretty regular basis on these documents and has identified 44 of them where we have most of the sufficient, or almost all of the information that we need to file in order to complete the, the right-of-way purchase and filing and documents. The only thing that we're missing are plats, and so this agreement is with Infrastructure Design Group to create plats on 44 parcels that were included on negotiations and settlements over the last 20 years on County Highway 110, where we just didn't file all of the documents at the Register of Deeds. And so along with these plats and the documents that have been filed and have been sitting in our department that need to be filed, we'll complete the right-of-way purchases and transactions that should have been done many, many years ago. And so, like I said, there is about 200 record, or 200 parcel records in whole, but this one will take care of 44 of them. And the cost for this work is about $45,030, and will include 44 plats. So I'll stand by for any questions.
Questions?
To comment? Thank you for digging through boxes. This is pretty sad to think that these have been sitting and never completed.
I will say thankfully, the people responsible for this work are no longer employed by the county, and so our team has been putting a lot of work and effort towards it and, and correcting things that should have just been done differently in the past.
Any other questions? Commissioner Barth?
Just comment that it shows we actually have a need for a civil deputy attorney to be in your office. I mean, this seems like a full-time job. Definitely.
Okay. All right. If there aren't any other questions, oh, Commissioner Benega?
DJ, do you have a goal and when you're going to have all these completed?
These 44, our goal is June of next year, and there's a lot of fieldwork that needs to be completed to do 44 plats. Thankfully, they're all within a few miles of one another, and so the land survey, the land surveyors working, breaking down the sections will be pretty efficient in that. They don't have to go to 44 different places throughout the county, so, but there's still a lot of fieldwork and, and office work with 44 plats. We're hoping to get these done by June of next year, and then it will, Judy is going to continue working on the remaining 150 of them.
So it's going to take four times as long to do those 156 as it's taken to do the 44?
She picked this group to work on first because they were all grouped together. It's a big chunk. I know that the remaining 156 of them aren't necessarily all grouped together like these have been, and so I'm, I used to say that this is probably a career-long project for somebody, and, and we don't know yet if that's going to be true, but it's definitely years in the making.
All right. Anything else? If not, it entertain a motion.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item is consider a motion to allocate 100% of the 2019 county surplus property auction proceeds of $30,096.09 to the general fund, or to allocate $4,429.68 of that amount to the highway fund with a balance of $25,666.41 to the general fund. Bob Litz?
Good morning. Bob Litz from the auditor's office. Should I even speak, or should I just ask for the action here? I mean, it seems like I was just up here not that long ago doing this very thing here, so. But yes, what, what Gene has outlined is the process we go through every year. We have our annual sale, our surplus sale, it's combined with the city, and the highway department is the source of a lot of things that produce income and as, as is the rest of the county. And so what we're asking you to do is decide if you want to put all the money in the general fund, or if you want to divide that out proportionately and give highway theirs and give the general fund theirs.
Commissioner Karski?
I'm going to make a motion for option two, which is allocate proceeds from the sale of highway equipment in the amount of 44, $4,429.68 to the highway fund, sale of county property, and the balance of $25,666.41 to be deposited into the general fund for the sale of county property.
Second. Motion and a second. Any other comments, questions? All right. Roll call vote, please.
Karski?
Aye.
Barth?
Aye.
Benega?
Aye.
Heiburger?
Aye.
Bender?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. So that takes us to item 17, which is also yours.
Bob Litz from the auditor's office still. In the tax deed process years, this year, we observed seven parcels that were delinquent for the period of four years or more. The owner was served notice on all the parcels except RDID 62130. As a result, even though the taxes for that one parcel are still outstanding, legal counsel has recommended that we restore title to the former owner of record due to service issues. The auditor's office has been working with taxpayer to bring all arrears current, but it's complicated by administration of a family trust that needs to have all transactions for payments approved by all the members of the family. As a result of the inadvertent taking of, by the county of the tax deed title, the action the auditor's office is seeking is restoration to the former owner of title as stated in the resolution.
Any questions?
Motion to approve?
Second.
Motion and a second. Roll call vote, please.
Barth?
Aye.
Benega?
Aye.
Heiburger?
Aye.
Karski?
Aye.
Bender?
Aye. Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you, Commissioner. Bob, so their family problem is our problem? Well, yes. You know, there's, there's a lot of moving parts to this here involving the auditor's office, treasurer's office, and in our state's attorney. And in that process of the taking, yeah, we, we did not do the service on them all. And, and I would add that at the beginning of the year, when we started the process, that I got the certificates based on the oldest taxes that were there, and the sixth were in a row, and then the seventh one was a few pages back, and somehow it just got overlooked.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
My bills just have to be approved by my wife.
Next item is item 18, which is a brief on two alcohol beverage compliance checks failures. Olivia?
Thank you. Olivia Larson, Auditor's Office. On November 13th, 2019, we received notice from the sheriff's office that they had conducted compliance checks of 40 licensees, and two licensees that failed were Minnehaha County, or processed by Minnehaha County, and that would be 38 Roadhouse and Friendly's Fuel Stop. And just for clarification purposes, because we did approve certain liquor licenses on November 12th, none of those licenses had any issues, so we're still good on those. But essentially what happens is at renewal time in spring of 2020, we will need to hold a public hearing for these two entities to, in order for them to move forward. And in the meantime, the Department of Revenue does impose monetary penalties, and there is a possibility for the employee who served the alcohol to the minor to be charged with a crime.
Any questions? Commissioner Heiburger?
Just a clarification, that the Friendly's Fuel Stop was the Baltic, because there are two Friendly's. There are two Friendly's.
Commissioner Barth?
I know that we've previously had issues at 38 Roadhouse earlier in my career, and I remember the ownership or license was transferred to another party, and we were somewhat suspicious of it, and I happened to stop in there for a moment, and I, I noticed that the previous operator was bartending, even though the new owner supposedly had, had ownership. And I think they also got in trouble for after hours, where a deputy stopped by and while sweeping the floor, they were just having a couple more, and et cetera. So this place has not been our most upstanding establishment. I, I do think when I went there, they did recognize me.
Okay. Anything else? Commissioner Karski?
Commissioner Barth, you've been around a long time, so I mean, it says the license was transferred in '06, so I mean, about when were you there?
Only five or six times since then, but...
I just was wondering, was it, I mean, they haven't had a violation in 13 years, which is, I mean, to have one isn't good, but I mean, the new ownership, at least that's what I'm reading, if I'm reading it correctly, so. Yeah. I pass, don't want to drag up too many past sins of the, of the establishment when they seem like they've been doing okay.
Well, you and I can go there and check it out.
I might have to. I've never stopped in there.
All right. Well, we'll have an opportunity to visit about these when they have to come forward for a hearing, so.
Madam Chair, let me just finally say that although we chuckled about it, it is a serious thing, and there's clearly too much going on of that nature.
Thank you. All right. That takes us to item 19, which is to consider a resolution to declare two John Deere Gators as surplus and authorize donation of surplus equipment to the Sioux Empire Fair Association. Carol, good morning.
Commissioners, Carol Muller, Commission Office. Before you today is a resolution, the short story is the city had two Gators, two John Deere Gators, that they were surplusing, the value of which was, each was $2,750, and the fair association was interested in it. The city said they would prefer to donate to move them over to the county, and the county then donate them to there. So that's the paper trail that you're doing today.
All right. This is a situation where statute requires we do this in the most complicated manner possible. And so the first, the way we have to accomplish this is through two motions. The first motion would be to accept the donation of the two John Deere Gators from the City of Sioux Falls for the purpose of donation to the Sioux Empire Fair Association.
So move?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any questions? Roll call vote, please.
Benega?
Aye.
Heiburger?
Aye.
Karski?
Aye.
Barth?
Aye.
Bender?
Aye. That motion passes unanimously, so we get to do a second motion. And the second motion is to approve the resolution declaring two John Deere Gators as surplus and authorizing the donation of surplus equipment to the Sioux Empire Fair Association.
That's my motion.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any other comments? Roll call vote, please.
Heiburger?
Aye.
Karski?
Aye.
Barth?
Aye.
Benega?
Aye.
Bender?
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. All right. That takes us to liaison reports. Are there any liaison reports this morning?
Commissioner Barth?
First, let me say that last week when I reported on the towns and townships meeting that we attended, I forgot to mention that Carol Muller was in attendance along with several other county people, and I, I felt bad about it when I forgot to note that. Next, I guess we had a planning meeting last night, which was the shortest meeting I have ever experienced in planning and zoning. We had two items, and they passed on consent. I had a, attended a meeting of the Southeast District of Counties along with a couple others, including Commissioner Karski, and one interesting thing was someone from the DOT talking about resilience being a issue for the DOT. We talked about building bigger culverts, wider bridges, et cetera, but surviving the storms which the DOT expects to revisit us in the spring. Resilience is their code word, I guess, to be able to stay in operation, get back in operation. And then I, I went to a meeting of the East Dakota Water Development District, and we had a great presentation on riparian barriers and stuff. You know, most people don't know that the reason the river is brown is because of dirt. They have a feeling it's due to some other biological process, but it's, it's dirt and mud in the river. And keeping cattle away from the edge of the river, which our previous applicant on that planning and zoning thing, keeping them away from the river lets the grass grow and keeps the banks from eroding into, into the river. And I think, I think that's all of my reports.
Thank you. Anyone else? Commissioner Benega?
Briefly, Jeff and I, along with Craig, Carol, and Kim, spent three hours yesterday, yesterday morning reviewing insurance packages from two different vendors. We asked for some additional information, but we should have that completed in the next couple of weeks.
All right. Thank you.
A pile of paper.
That is, that is a job that we are very appreciative you undertook, so thank you very much. Anything else? All right. Are there any other liaison reports? That takes us to new business. Is there any new business today? If not, old business. Is there any old business today? Commissioner Benega?
I've had a couple of questions from people about the fairgrounds audit, and I just want the commission to know that the draft has been, I think, given to staff and management, and they're reviewing that before they make a presentation for the entire audit, which is a normal process.
All right. Thank you. All right. If there's no more old business, I'd entertain a motion to recess the Minnehaha County Commission meeting.
So move?
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. I have quite a stack of documents to sign here, so we're going to reconvene at about 10 o'clock. Okay? Thank you.